...call the meeting to a halt. The meeting is being recorded by the recording clerk for record keeping and also by just the chance, video, if anyone else wishes to record. See what we got here. Did you sign in? Somebody sign in. Our first matter is the development of the capital plan with the big [inaudible].
Yes, I wanted to give everyone a sneak peek and just sort of walk through the process that I intend to follow with regard to the capital requests that I've received thus far. We've been working to refine some of these numbers. We were waiting for some quotes, so does everybody have a copy of, it's just the one page? It's also on Board docs.
Given our commitment to transparency, we might want to use other words than speak.
Oh, good point, good point. How about, I'm giving you a look see.
There we go.
At some of the choices or issues or concerns that have been identified to us as we move forward in the budget process. I will be, so these are, I wouldn't call this the capital improvement plan, that's a slightly improper terminology however, because at this point, these are all requests. And one of the things that we're doing as a part of the process is really just sort of scrubbing these downs and trying to prioritize them with, in accordance with the scoring tool that we got from the call-in center, just really to categorize them in terms of, you know, safety versus facilities versus capital outlay, so really just to get a general sense of how much, what do we need, how do we need it, when do we need it, and where there might be flexibility. So at this point, this is not a, this is really a work in progress, and I'm bringing it to you because clearly, the guideline, if you will, that I've been given from the capital, from the finance committee, is that typically, traditionally, there's $300,000 set for a pay-as-you-go capital, and that's basically taking free cash or using the free cash and allowing there to be appropriations to meet a lot of the capital needs that might be on here. And so what I wanted to do, rather than say, this is what I think we should do or can do, I wanted to explain to you sort of some of the rationale that we all need to think about as we go through this list. Because first of all, as you know, we don't have a facilities manager to go and inspect the roof of the fire station. I asked the chief, the fire chief, that used to be on this list, I asked her, you know, is 10,000 enough for roof repairs, you know, how do we know what it will cost? And she says, well, I've asked for some quotes, but I haven't received any. And I said, well, given the fact that it's a lower threshold, that we might be better off holding off on that and then utilizing our facilities warrant article to fund that project, when and if we can identify what the needs are, how much it will cost to fix it. So that came off the list because I felt that there was another, there was another opportunity in another budget line to deal with that impact. If there's a leak in the roof of the fire department, we have to fix it, but without getting all of the quotes and having somebody with professional background in that, I didn't feel that it would be warranted to add that and keep that on the list as we move forward. But the place that that might come from is another line further down, and that's with regard to our town facilities, that second box. Before I jump to the second box, I'll just walk through what we have in the first box, which would be essentially the Board of Selectmen's priorities or identified needs that have come to my, to my attention, and I wanted to walk through those with you, so I can get some sense from you as to, you know, how you think about some of these and where you believe that they might fit. And also, I mean, some of the things, if we're only allowed, if FinCom decides that there's only 300,000 and that's all we have, then we've got a lot of choices to be making because two of these items on this list together, the two pieces that already exceed that 300 are the truck from Highway, the front-end loader, and then the school security systems. I mean, that's $170,000. So those two things alone would easily eat up the 300,000. So just bringing these issues to you as I try to contemplate the best and most efficient way to go through them. So the first section are, we have servers that are beyond their useful or recommended useful life. They're about eight years old, Donna, I think, our servers. And typically, you want to start replacing those as they reach five years old, you usually start to plan for those. We had briefly talked about those last year, but they never seem to make it to the final list. One of the reasons was because we were in the midst of the move and we weren't quite sure exactly. When we moved to Microsoft 360, what server needs we may or may not need after we made that transition to the cloud-based Microsoft. So there was some questions, some technical questions about that, and without having, you know, an IT person to ask specifically about that at the time, we decided to sort of hold off. Donna, did you have something before?
So there's, they're failing too. The servers are failing. Last week, Patriot went down, you know, two days before that, the main server's going down, they're going down because they're losing memory, and so it's been suggested by our people that we contemplate, and that's also another bigger thing, is that they are failing. They are starting to fail because they're getting to the end of their expiration, and the necessity is becoming more of a necessity than we can wait a year.
So one of the examples...
So the recommendation, you said, our people, we're talking about the technology committee.
I don't have, I don't, I'm talking about Bob Sundberg and Jake.
Bob Sundberg and, and...
Bob's not going to, no, I don't talk to him, but if Bob does, then that's fine, but it is being...
Sapienza's not really...
Yeah, so it is being suggested by our people that support us, plus retrofit.
Right.
Because they're failing, and they have to keep coming in and resetting them and fixing them and...
How many servers do we have, Donna?
Four.
One very good example of where these are failing us and where we're failing it at this point in time is really with regards to our financial staff. I mean, I've gotten complaints from, not complaints, but they've let me know that in the middle of doing a massive spreadsheet, either the town accountant or the treasurer or the assessor, well, their whole system will just freeze and they'll have to get out of everything and start over again. So that was one example of where, when you're in the middle of doing a budget projection, you don't want your computer crashing, so...
So question I have, are any of these servers running backups?
Oh, they're all backed up.
Yeah, they're all backed up.
Backed up on the servers?
They're backed up at retrofit.
Retrofit is...
Which is our, retrofit is our maintenance people for the servers.
So it's, from our point of view, it's an off-site backup?
Yes.
How often does that run?
Every night.
Every night, okay.
So we have 24/7 maintenance on them, so at 2:00 in the morning when they go down, I get a call, not at home, here, saying that the service went down. Bob gets a call, Bob Sundberg, who's our volunteer IT guy, and then we all try to figure out how to bring them up, or what went wrong.
Right. My question is less with questioning why or how they're going bad, more just wondering, just trying to get a little background on, so we need four replacements for these to do the same functions, and if we're doing backups off-site, is there a dedicated server that does backups?
So we have one that's a file server, they're not really great at this. So they want to, we have one that they're going to split and just have as a server and one as a holding all the documents that need to be held, even though they're held, so that we get faster service, that it's not being held. I don't know that I...
I think you're getting into the security concerns, which are a valid issue, but...
Well, I'm concerned if we're going to make changes and buy new stuff, my concern is that we don't just replace what we have without, you know, we've already committed to looking at what's our whole software and hardware system, the whole IT question. And I'm not worried specifically about the money as much as making sure that we don't replace what we have now if upon enacting a strategy to get an outside assessment. By the way, we found sources at MMA that will provide free health scans for the computers and very cost-effective, they do a complete inventory and check on everything, that we get the right thing, and if there was recommendation to make a change of some kind, we could do that. So it's a timing issue, not an if issue in my mind. I grant that they're going bad, and you do, when one part goes bad, more goes bad.
What percentage of time, Donna, do you think they're down?
Lately, a lot, they have been going, I don't know the technical numbers.
Just like 20% of the time you find they're down?
I don't know that.
How many times a month do you...
Well, recently, they've been going down at least once a month or, you know, once or twice a month, depending on the server. We have a domain controller server, and a Patriot one, and they want to split it, and I'm like, no, sweet, two domain controllers. I can get you all the technical stuff.
Well, this kind of, this kind of goes to the subject that we've talked about before. We are getting close, and we may already be there, where we need an IT manager or an IT committee. Bob Sundberg is working his butt off, and he was in here the other night at midnight trying to get this thing up and running again, and he's a guy that's retired, and hell, he's as old as I am probably, and he needs to be up at midnight down here working on servers as badly as he needs a hole in it.
Well, that's what Kelly and I are working on, goal number seven, the IT, looking at what we have for systems, what we have for security, backup, et cetera, and a need, Kelly's been working with some of the other towns about some collaborative working for an IT position amongst several towns. So it's all in the works, this looks like an immediate need though, that we have hardware issues that...
Well, it is, little different story.
Except, again, take Mr. Spencer's comments one step further, and what's happening now is that there's cloud-based solutions for a lot of this stuff. So programs that weren't are now available, I don't know what the municipal program is, but are now available on the cloud, and backup is done, and I'm being advised in real life that, you know, the cloud, a lot of the cloud-based solutions are much more secure than a local ever would be, so I don't know how we juggle the need versus the time, or at least, I think part of your point is why we go...
Still need a backup server.
Go buy four, four servers...
So yeah, you still need your servers.
Or whatever, and then find out, three months later, that it would have been a better approach than what it is.
If we're not on a cloud-based system right now, it's not something you do overnight.
Right.
So from a timing perspective, you're talking, how many, this 20,000 is two servers?
Two, plus the labor and installation.
So that's what we're asking for this year, and...
And I'll add two on my list.
And the applications that those two do are file serving and...
One's Patriot, one's strictly Patriot.
Oh, Patriot, one is Patriot property?
One is, one is solely for Patriot property, which runs the assessing.
Okay. Are we going to replace, the first, the first two are we going to replace the two that go down the most frequently?
I would think one would be Patriot, one would be a main domain controller, and that we maybe move one over to be a backup server to hold the other stuff. So we spent an hour talking with retrofit, I have Jake and Bob and myself talking with Mike P., who's the server guy at retrofit, going over the specifications that are needed specifically for the town of Topsfield, and what our needs are as Mike P., who's been with us forever, at least 15 years, knows our concerns and knows our, what our, what our needs are, so he is coming up with a quote on, a more specific quote. I have one from Dell that is being placed on the capital before you today, but we, as we move down, will get more specific on that.
Is Mike P. with retrofit?
Yes, but some of them are, their expiration date of being supported are expiring in 2019 and 2020.
That's key.
So that's basically the urgency of it, for them to be failing is just a designation that you need to be looking at this, and timing is everything, so I'm like, Kelly, they're failing, we should put them on the capital. And if we have to put two on for next year, then that's okay, but I think we need to think ahead, and yeah, everything goes cloud-based, but you still need a server in hell. And yeah, we do need an IT person, so it's not me here trying to explain this all to you that I don't know anything about.
Right. We're working on that as well.
But Bob's doing a great job, I think he didn't want to move us, that being said, there has to be more of a constant person here responsible for all of these things as we move, and technology becomes more and more interlinked with our everyday lives and things.
So to, to sort of come full circle with that, the things that we have in mind, that we've sort of put out there, that are on the table at this point, at our last budget meeting, we talked about putting in a placeholder for IT, a placeholder for facilities, so I just, I essentially cut in half what I thought would be a full-time salary and just put it in there so we could have a starting point. So for IT, I put a request for $50,000, I put a request for $60,000 for facility, or it's vice versa, sorry.
Where are those?
Those are in a separate, that's not capital, that's in our operational budget, those are the essential unfunded requests. So those are the numbers that I put forward, just so we're all on the same page. But the idea is that whether we hire somebody, we consult with somebody, or we go into a larger collaborative with, so I was at a meeting yesterday to follow up on one of our action items from the priorities. We had Essex, Manchester by the Sea, Wenham, Danvers, Middleton, Boxer wasn't there, but's interested, Hamilton, I think there was one more. So there are a group of us and the managers that we got together, and we're talking about putting together, and this is due February 15, a letter, a grant request to the state for a regionalization grant for a regional IT consortium, whatever, we haven't come up with a name yet. And the idea would be, so Danvers got, they spent about $80,000 doing a massive IT study for Danvers, and they're talking about integrating the schools and town together, but they had a great consultant who they think would easily put together a scope and a price quote for them. So what we're doing is we're just pulling all of our resources together, hoping that if we can get a study of all these towns, that we could get back on track. There's three different things we're talking about, we're talking about infrastructure, like servers, the other leg of the stool would be business solutions like Board Docs and all of the solutions and apps, and then the other one was customer service being, you know, the desktop service that, and everybody's, they're like, isn't that what you're, so volunteer Bob is how everybody in Essex County is going to be talking about Bob when they refer to him, and Jake, and they said, Jake from State Farm? So we've got little names for everybody, but we basically told everybody about where we stand and what we're looking to do. And so Danvers is going to be one of the supporting agencies for this collaborative, and Middleton is helping to write the grant, they have an assistant, a new assistant town manager who used to work for the call-in center doing these types of regional collaborations. So we're on, we're well on our way. The problem or the issue with the timing is we have to get this stuff out here, whether we can explain what it is or not, because if we don't get this on radar now, before town meeting, I mean, we literally have to wait until next town meeting every time. So we're putting a number on the page based on the information we have now, a lot of things in work, in the works, but these servers are not going to be supported, and we're going to have more and more problems as we move forward, so it was my recommendation, it would be, will be, my recommendation, that we need to find some way to pay for this. So that's just one, the other ones are, I'll just tell you, it's a continuation of what we've been doing in land use, the document management, centralization, we still have a lot of maps and plans that are in storage, so we were, we put together some cost estimates on what it would cost to centralize those and also to get the equipment to store those, and then same thing here, record storage shelving equipment for financial records. Now, these are very easily justified as a one-time expense with free cash, so I'm hoping that as we move this conversation forward, we can then talk about funding source and the amount, and how we allocate that, and whether or not the FinCom is going to be open to discussing, you know, what that number is and what can and should be, you know, used for, or the free cash could potentially be used for, but I want to make sure we're having this conversation now, and if we, if you as a board decide that that's not your priority, that is certainly your, you know, that's for you all to decide with us, and we'll bring you that information, we need to have that conversation, so this is a sneak peek.
Kelly, can I ask you, these, when you add up the three of these, it comes to 45,000. Didn't we have already 45,000 allocated for document storage and consolidating all our records to move over here?
Not all, just land use. We did Conscom, Board of Health, and building inspection, inspection services.
That's all we did.
So hold on, we did their files, we did not do their maps.
This is just the maps.
We did not do the maps.
No, no.
They're still, they're still in cardboard boxes.
Yeah, yeah.
And the maps are plans.
No, and plans, yes, plans, yeah.
Well...
Yep.
So, and we knew, we knew this way into it.
So if we're in the paper, this is just again, sorting them and putting them in an easy-to-find format?
Yes, we're not even talking about digitizing anything at this point, we need to organize what we have.
The way that stuff is stored today, Lynn, if you needed to find a particular plan, it would really, because they're all rolled up and combined together.
So what actually are you buying, since this is capital? It's not the manpower, before it was a lot of manpower.
That would be in here, if, yeah, no, for this, we need, we need the storage bins, we need the equipment, and we also just need somebody to come in to physically organize them and to put them in based on the central system that now we've set up, based on address. So our land use planning system now is based on address, street, number, and we would just have to have the maps coordinated that same way, and that's what that $5,500 would do, the centralization of the maps and plans and storage, that would be the labor cost.
And the labor falls under capital?
Yes, because it's more than $5,000, and it's a special one-time project. Well, it's one time in that this, I see this as a multi-phase project when we talk about document management, so we're just sort of continuing to build on the momentum that we've already begun with the land use, and the maps seeing the next easy, low-hanging fruit to pluck.
So to actually put the details in perspective of where we are right now, what we have is a set of files for Board of Health, a set of files for buildings, and a set of files for Conscom, and they are all by addresses, they're not yet merged. So the question is, do we try to do plans and drawings before we merge them, or do we merge them first, or do we electronically deal with them? But I think Donna has a point.
Can I answer that? First of all, it has been decided that the people that are utilizing the files and zoning and planning is also added in there, is that we're going to keep them separate, because they were supposed to be intertwined, but they, the people that use them don't want to do that. So we are going to keep them, building, Conscom, Board of Health, zoning and planning, all separate, but in the same general, it has saved an awful lot of space, so it is not a bad project, it's just, at any rate, the maps are building inspectors, and there's everybody's maps, and that is totally separate, the maps are not included in the high-density storage project that was done last year for the 45,000.
So the suggestion that you're making is that we would take the, we'd have, we'll get done with this, we'd have Board of Health, we'd have Conscom, we'd have buildings, and then we'd have another merged plans and drawings for all three of them by address. Is that what we're saying?
I believe so, and I believe that there will also be old maps, two that are down there, that are like from the 1900s if they're scrolled up, because there's a lot of road maps, these are road maps.
So those are not by addresses, and what we just heard was, you know, by address we want to do things.
Right, well, they will be by address, they will be, they will be by address as much as they can be, but we will do it as by address, not by year, or not by...
Yeah, I think we need to do some thinking about it.
Kind of a, you almost need like a multi-layered GIS index, so you can point to a place and find out, however it's filed, this is where you go to get, this is where you go to get that.
So they're all in boxes now, they're all in plastic containers, and this is just a way to preserve them in a more, preserve the maps and everything in a better way, so that...
Is this to allow people to find them easier, or to just take up less space?
Both.
Both.
I would say both.
So that filing system still needs to be addressed then when you move them into this new location, because they're not easy to find right now?
Right now, nothing's easy to find down there.
Except Conscom, Health, and inspections.
Except your high-density stuff.
Yeah, that's really easy.
And after the maps, is there another set of information that's coming down the pike next to do this for?
So there's the financials, which is the assessors and the treasurer collectors, and these are all documents, I will state, that cannot be destroyed, we need to keep them in paper form, you may electronically put them in whatever database you want, but you still are required to keep 1,800 maps, you know, from the 1,800, you can't get rid of stuff. And also with payroll and with the assessors and all of these property record cards and all of this stuff that is deemed that is not, is permanent record needs to stay somewhere.
For some period of time?
The entire, forever in perpetuity.
The financials are forever in perpetuity?
Yes, assessors and...
There's document retention schedule for the state is about two inches thick, you have to look up by department, by record, and the law applies for what needs to be permanent. What we found though, so organizing these records, the way that the space, so they're easier to find, but what we've also found is that instead of having to hold a permanent record in Conscom, Health, and building inspections, we're realizing, oh, we have three copies of the same thing, we can get rid of the two that we don't need, and so by being more organized and having a better, larger system, we're saving space because we're able to purge duplications of records that we've traditionally had in three different silos, or four, five silos.
Is that what happened the first time around when we spent the 45,000, they purged the extra two and consolidated?
They identified everything that was there, they organized it by address, even if they're physically separate, they're all using the same system based on address, street, number.
But all those duplicates are gone, you only have one copy of these paper copies.
Yes, so they would give them back and they'd say, okay, this is, like, they would just mark them as duplicate, so they don't throw anything away, but our staff would be going through them and, you know, getting rid of them, or some of the things they'll, they would identify as, you know, you don't need to keep this forever, so you just need to follow the regular retention schedule and ask the secretary to, for permission to get rid of it, basically, to dispose of it. So there's a lot of rules around it, which is why we have so much paper in our basement, basically. So we're trying to, we're trying to get, and this is why we call it the document management system, many different records, many different documents from various departments, we need a system, and this is sort of the next phase of our system. Last year, we knew, I knew, we had asked for $140,000 for a number of different things, we scaled that back. One of the things we asked for was laserfish software, so we could build an electronic umbrella or skeletal system for our electronic records, I pulled that off the grid, we applied for the grant, we have the money, so that's another piece of it. So there's many layers to this, and what we're trying to do here is find the low-hanging fruit, so that we can build our momentum, keep moving forward, and continue to get into a system where we can have Kings come in and tell us, this is the best way to hold this, we can do, you know, a database for you, and then you get to the point where you can scan records and digitize them, which is why we're not there yet, and which is why there's nothing on here about digitizing.
You're going to start with King again.
We're gonna, we're gonna just quote everything, and Kings is, they're very sophisticated, but they're very expensive, so we've been quoting and getting other folks to come to the table.
Well, we started with King.
Yeah.
But you went somewhere else because you could get it for a lot less money.
Exactly, right. But we didn't know what we didn't know, so having King come to the table and explaining...
Well, they're pretty good teachers, I sent in some of the ladies, and they, they were pretty good teachers in terms of, this is how you should do it, this is what other people are doing, that's how we wound up with the system.
But it was also great to have a technical expert saying, this is the way you should do it, you shouldn't be digitizing anything, if you've got a big mess, you've got to clean up the mess and get rid of it, purge, before you can set up your system, so that was, it was very helpful to do that. That's what this is all about here, so it says the bottom line is $90,000, actually, that doesn't count telecommunications for library and town hall, but the total of all of these projects comes to $90,000. So my next step would be to refine this list and to give you some more detail and some pictures in a one-pager that says, why do we need it, how much does it cost, could we put it off? We could, but you can make that decision in priority, but that's why some of this will run, so as I'm discussing these items with you, I'll be, you know, sharing some of this info, once the next layer, we'll get that to the FinCom as well, so that they'll have an opportunity to digest some of this, and then we'll have a separate presentation at whatever meeting, and we'll just go through the list, we'll show what all the requests are, and what the recommendations would be to move forward based on the parameters that FinCom is allowing us to have.
What is the telecom, oh, sorry, what's the telecom piece, the 25,000?
The phone, yeah, the phone system we have is, is just, it's horrible and it's more expensive, I think this is like a bad, this is, this is an example of going to the lowest bidder and how sometimes it costs you more, and you receive less quality. I don't, I don't know about the rest of you, but I, I call people on their cell phone because it's so, it's terrible.
This is the one that we just installed, but we're never done.
This is about five years old now.
Five years old.
It's, to even change the message, right?
The network is not working.
It's not working.
And we need to do something, we need to spec something different...
Yes.
To make it function. I think the important thing is to get a good list of what essentially doesn't work, order of magnitude... order of magnitude, what would be different if we spent this money. And likewise, since I'm on the subject, in the case, I'm just thinking about being in front of town meeting, we really want to have that log of the outages of the service. If we're asking people to buy something, just so we have a backup. Hopefully, you don't really ask the question. If they ask the question, we want to be able to say, server one, we're not like this, we're not like that, we're going to add a couple of things that say, it caused this, it caused that, whatever we want, but some real data that we can go with when we go in front of town meeting. But especially on this communication, so especially since we spent recently on something you kind of think would go for, wow, what would be different if we do this? Would help our business run better?
Yeah, yeah. The library's on the same system that is...
Yes.
It's a separate system, is it not? It's two separate systems, same vendor.
Same vendor, yeah, it's...
But it's a different computer, you know, they're in their building, we're in our building.
Who's the vendor? Who do we use?
Well, I don't know.
Ostrich?
Well, it's vertical, vertical. The Ostrich is a different part of it.
Yeah, the one that we're looking at is the same one that the police and fire use, and they have very good feedback about it.
But we'll go out to bid, we don't know, we don't know who'll come back with a good deal. We have to expect it, go out to bid, all this sort of thing, but we know roughly what it would cost.
But we also know that their systems are working and ours isn't, so that would certainly be one of the vendors we're looking for.
You're going to come up with a listing, what the difference is.
Doesn't work, yes, okay, that's good. Okay, so anyway, I apologize, I didn't think this would take us long, but I think it's also important to understand where, you know, no need for me to be tossing and turning about these questions at two in the morning, you know. Welcome to having you be thinking about this stuff too. So next is town facilities. This facility's maintenance and repairs fund has been just so helpful, and I would, I would venture to say if it wasn't for this fund, we'd be calling a lot more special town meetings. Because a lot of the things that fall from this fund, or that are being funded by this, these monies, are things that if we had a regular facilities department or a facilities coordinator, this will probably be under their discretion. But we use it as sort of those emergency repairs or things that are, that we don't know are going to break, but it gives us the ability to go and grab, and to, and to fund those repairs. Twenty-five thousand is really just sort of a placeholder, so we can keep, right now we're down to about eleven thousand dollars with all of, so every year we've been voting on this article, and right now we're down to about eleven or twelve thousand dollars that's remaining, so we need to replenish that, which is why I'm putting a number of twenty-five thousand rather than eighteen-five, which is what the call-in center report recommended. This is really a number that we use to help round us, you know, to round our final numbers. But, so that could go up or down depending on how the other needs fall into place, but it should definitely be going up rather than down because we do have needs, and one broken radiator or one garage door falling off its track and needing to be fixed could easily eat up twenty-five thousand dollars. But I think this is very necessary for us to, to fund.
You just jumped in for a second for clarity, because we're using the same words. So this is our customary, unusual, something breaks this week.
One article.
This is nothing, this is not what we've been talking about, which is a person or a contract or a facility.
Correct.
And you may end up calling them the same thing or having them the same label, but that's not what that twenty-five is, I just need to clarify.
Correct, you're right. That's for emergency repairs or facility repairs, unanticipated repairs, so that we don't have to ask for a reserve fund transfer every time a furnace breaks down.
But it's above, above and beyond what is in everybody's other, so these are like eight thousand dollar repairs. These are not, you know, going and fixing. They take care of whatever's in their operating budget to do the minor, but this are the big, your buildings are older. They have things, I mean, they're, at this time last year, they had frozen pipes that burst in the, in the police station. You know, there are things that happen that are over and above what can be handled within their own budget. And they do go to their own budget, and maybe they take some of it out of their budget and ask for supplemental through this warrant article. I control, I, they have to come, they have to come through me to get it.
But in all communications, we need to do something to make sure that people know, this isn't, this isn't, this is not manpower.
Right.
Or a contract, but this is, this is distinct from that vacuum.
And which facilities is this? Does this town hall, does this inspire?
Yeah, all, all town buildings.
Water department?
Yep, and they have to come to me, and they ask me if I can, if there's enough money and it's funded and it goes over.
And we also, Donna and I will always say, wait a minute, that sounds like it's safety-related. Why don't we ask Meyer if they could fund that? So we try to just troubleshoot it at that point and see where the best source of funding is. And sometimes there might be a warrant article somewhere that was for a certain purpose and wasn't spent down. So we basically troubleshoot all of those issues, but we need to have that resource there one at a time.
We need to replenish it each year. It needs to be replenished.
We have to tell them, I'm saying we need to have it there.
No, I can say...
Maybe it has some value.
No, we need this year.
Let me, let me, I'm, I'm, just a second. When we talk about a pipe breaking in the police department, for example, in the police building, that is an unexpected emergency. It is not something that you build in as part of a maintenance item, breaking of pipes or something of that nature. And that is why we have, the FinCom has an emergency fund for unexpected thing. That is a very unusual thing. It could cost twenty, thirty thousand dollars to go fix it. We don't necessarily have to create this kind of an article simply to fix these unanticipated emergencies. We have a process to do that. We should have enough money in the various budgets to take care of normal maintenance. Do doors fall off tracks? Yes. Do they cost ten thousand dollars to put them back on the track? Probably not, oh boy. Those are the kinds of things that should be in the maintenance. I think it'd be valuable to us to see all of the maintenance items drawn out of the other budgets. So we have an order of magnitude of how much this is versus what the various departments have.
Yes, I'm not into a debate. We can get into details at the next stage, but I respectfully disagree. There's a certain amount of, what this is trying to describe, that's predictable. We may not know where the pipe's going to break, but we know that a certain amount of it's needed. And the difference is that it allows our administration to deal with it, and it does not rise to the level of waiting for the next FinCom meeting and using some of that. So it's, it's a choice.
I want to hear the history of it then, since this is a capital item. The history of it is this. We had a facilities study done, and the facilities study report came out in February. And at the time, I said, there's no way we're going to figure out which of those items we're going to spend in the coming year. In February, March, in order to go forward and put in a warrant article that says, we're going to do this based on this report, this, this, and that report, I said, I don't like to do this, but let's go in front of town meeting and say, we want X amount of dollars, I can't remember how much it was, to be used against this report. Only the items in that report. In other words, the town meeting wants to know what we're allocating money for. And so it was only for those items. That, that was the caveat. And I said, we might take some heat on it, but I think I can explain that, you know, here's the report, and it has these, the items, it has all these numbers in it, so it's the only thing we're going to, we don't know which ones because you didn't have time to work it out. That was the basis for it, and I think that's the kind of basis you have to go to town meeting with if we're, if we're fiscally responsible, especially when we talk about something being a warrant article and talking about it as being capital. These things really are, I don't have a problem with saying we're spending more than we have been allocating into our budgets for maintenance. We have to update our budgets. That's being honest with everybody. As a matter of fact, that was part of the discussion we had with Masco and saying that, you know, we had these problems, and I said, update your budget on, on the maintenance if it needs more than you're putting in there. So I think from our point of view, fiscally, we need to think about how we would apply these things, and I, I don't think we should be applying them as capital because it becomes, in one way or another, a slush fund. Granted, we're using it in good ways, but we haven't committed how we're using it.
I have no problem with us deciding anything, it's capital, it's not capital. There's a different way to budget or something like that. I don't like the word slush fund. Let me just call timeout for one second. We kind of added this to the meeting, and I just want to stay on some level that was attended. We basically want to put this into the system and go through it kind of quickly. And I don't, you know, this is the time, this is the first exposure you wanted us to think about. We're into real minute detail here, and that's okay if no one has some plans, I don't necessarily mind it. But the intention was mostly to focus on the executive session today. And we, are we covering, let me just ask this question. Are we covering the discussion of facility maintenance as we go through here, or that's another, still another discussion?
It seems like, I mean, the intent was to have two separate agenda items, but it just naturally seems to be flowing together.
So let's, I'd ask, remember, it's just, I don't mind questions, it's a working session, that's why we're here. But let's not get full meetings ahead of ourselves into minute details. I think the idea was for you to just get this into our street consciousness.
Yes, yes, yes. So, and again, I'm not a maintenance, facilities maintenance technician, but when the police chief says that he needs a generator, I put that on the list. Clearly, more questions need to come in the plumbing system replacement. I am merely, I am collecting information to the extent that I can help to formulate our department head's ability to explain what it is, why they need it. That's why it's on this list, because it's a request. We will be drilling down to the next level of detail, so the next time we talk about this, I'm going to have some pictures and some, some audiovisual slides to go with it. In the meantime, this gives you the overview. So now we've got police and fire. There, so we've got the cruiser, of course, that's rolling stock, if you will, and then radio replacement. Now, every single thing on this list is here, I should say. There's many different ways you could handle these expenses, whether you call them capital and you call them a warrant article, or you call them an operational budget expense or capital outlay. There's many different ways we can do this, but this seems to be the path by which we're able to identify based on policy guideline. Policy guideline is anything that's more than five thousand dollars and has a useful life of longer than one year. What this seems to be capturing are all of the expenses that could either be a one-time. We could use free cash, one-time, pay that down, which is what most towns do. They'll use that free cash to pay for those one-time capital expenses so that we don't have to put twenty-five thousand dollars in the operating budget every year for unknown pipes breaking or whatever. So that's how it's sort of, it's here. So there's no one right or wrong way to do it. Some of this is science, some of it's art. The science part is what does the state finance law tell us how we can handle certain expenses? The art is, how do we present it? I'm getting this in front of you. How you want to categorize it is really a matter of policy guideline or information from this board, but also to the FinCom. The cruiser's the notorious one. We pay for it every year. Why is it in capital? It doesn't matter to me. I'm identifying it as a need, however we decide to pay for it is really another process. So John, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, you spoke exactly to my question. If we need a cruiser and we're buying one new cruiser every year, then it seems to me that somehow that ought to go into the police department budget rather than a separate item, although I can also see...
That's been debated for decades.
I know, I know.
Every, over and over and over.
Well, cross my mouth, I'm going to say it.
Well, it's important to talk about because there are some issues here. The chief would say, well, actually, the way we do it, we need to get two in some years. So there's potentially, number two, some are more expensive than other ones. The sixty thousand dollars is the golden-plated one or something.
No, no, it's a new, it's a new model. They don't do the Fords anymore.
Oh, the standard model? Oh, I thought, I really thought it was the special, four-wheel.
No, they've got a unique vehicle that is not just an Explorer that's been, you know, pumped up with big springs.
The other piece of it is, when you do get into some pressure, since these are purchased items, you can potentially take some chances and say, this year we're not going to buy it, it doesn't affect the budget.
Yeah, and if this is in fact...
If I could just ask a question, on the police station plumbing, there's an estimate, I take it, of sixty thousand dollars to fix the plumbing, and this is the first bite.
One fraction of that.
That's what we're, thank you.
Okay, so front-end loader highway, this was supposed to be, it was in last year's capital plan. We postponed that because we had the issue with the other snowplow, so we switched it out. So here it is again. This one fifty is actually the total purchase cost in the warrant article would read for one sixty-five. The reason it's split out here is because the water enterprise picks up ten percent of that. So I split it out, so that, that might be a little confusing, we can address that later. But, so it's one purchase for a hundred sixty-five thousand. The funding source is going to be some from enterprise, but the majority from the general fund.
Can I just go back to fire for a second? So ambulance rescue two, forty thousand. When Jen was lost in, and we were talking about this, it looked like the, the contract that she had was we get to use it for a year, and then we decide to keep it, it was going to be ten thousand. So we're back up to forty thousand, has the thinking changed?
No, if we wanted to keep that same vehicle, it would be ten thousand.
Right.
But she said that she thought there were potentially better deals out there in used vehicles. She likes the older ones because they're lower and they fit in the fire station. The brand-new ones are high enough that they have issues getting into the fire station.
Yeah, but she was talking about that being ten thousand dollars, and the budget item here says forty thousand. So if she likes the older ones that are better priced, that's not older than better price.
An ambulance is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Two hundred and twenty-five is...
The one she was talking about was ten thousand, so I'm not sure if there was just a change in thinking that got us up to forty thousand here or...
That's a good question.
Okay, so let me just clarify. First of all, the original plan said we're buying a new ambulance, and the chief said, we don't need a new ambulance, it's secondary purpose, it's not the primary. Middleton has one that's about to retire, we can just grab theirs, might not be forty, but you need to make sure you have enough for outfitting and everything. The fact that we got a temporary loaner is a miracle. I've never heard of that before. It's a miracle, but that was intended just to be sort of a loaner. But it, but the forty thousand dollars hopefully will be on the high end of what we think we can get the other one outfitted for and purchase from Middleton. We would have to ask the chief exactly the difference between what we're loaning right now versus what she wants to purchase for forty.
Right, that's, because the last time we talked, she said, probably I could get it better than ten because it's now a year older, so I'm just wondering if something happened between that discussion and we're back to forty thousand.
That the Middleton one may in some ways be seen as superior to the one that we have on loan, which would explain why, different vehicles, different prices, possibly.
Right, and she could, when I do the next level of detail on this summary sheet, I'll make sure that that's included. I don't remember ten thousand dollars being, it's always been...
That's in the contract. It was nine-nine-nine-nine. Remember, one dollar under ten thousand.
That's why, okay, till, apples and...
This is an old, old machine, but it's there.
We weren't going to buy it for that much, so that, yeah. I'll, I'll have her explain it because she can do much better.
Well, we asked her at that time if she knew where she could buy a used ambulance. And she said, I've already been to the marketplace, and I know where I can buy a used ambulance that's better than the loaner that we're going to pay ten grand for.
Right.
Okay, she was concerned about...
I think that ten was if we buy this one.
Yes, but it sounded like she was saying, I could get a better deal. That's what I was hearing. Now, it might be my interpretation of what she was saying.
Because of financial, maybe you've ever seen it.
So, yeah, I just didn't know what the thinking was. And then the public safety communications, is that for thirty-five thousand?
Yeah, this is outdated equipment that needs to be replaced. We did this for the police department, I think, three years ago.
Does it have anything to do with the RCC?
No.
That one to do that?
Okay, floor scrubber, I think we can just, honestly, it's on this list because they've asked, they've made the request. This is an example of something that probably use end-of-year turnbacks to pay for that, but I wanted to leave it on there. The other big-ticket item is the security systems for the schools. Those are eighty-five thousand dollars each. Those are the only two items on this year's capital list.
For the schools?
For the schools. What I'm also developing and refining right now is the five-year outlook. And from that outlook, you will see that if people think that a hundred seventy-five, a hundred seventy is too much to chew on, and we could, if people think we should postpone it for a year, they're going to see that that's going to add a much larger ripple effect through the capital plan for next year because there's other physical capital needs that they have. And I think that this would be the good year, given all of the state of affairs in the world these days and our need for additional security. This would possibly be the right time to fit this into the grid, if you recall. They didn't request, have any requests last year. But again, it's a big-ticket item, but something I think we should have a discussion about. Finally, water enterprise and cable fund, those are, as you know, other funds that the enterprise is self-supporting. These are items that I believe, and I didn't hear back from Greg, but I'm assuming that his water commissioners have approved these. I don't know if they formally voted them, but before we would go to town meeting and put these on the warrant, I'd certainly be looking for them to have a formal vote. But again, this doesn't really affect our general fund, but I do put... But again, this doesn't really affect our general fund, but I do put them on here so that people are aware of the need for town-wide capital infrastructure and identification of those expenses as we move forward. And then finally, the peg cable fund. This, this is audiovisual equipment for conference room and public hall. So the total is six thousand, and also portable camera equipment kit. We're trying to, I'm gonna be talking with Brad about expanding our, our, the, the personnel, whether they be volunteers or paid employees of recording meetings. And so one way that we'd have a flexibility is to have a portable camera equipment kit so that if we wanted to, you know, record a meeting that's going on at the same time here and across the way, we'd have a portable camera kit that we can bring from place point A to point B, and if we have more volunteers available to help with our cable, we might be able to save some money on our, you know, on our operating costs for our agreement with Boxer Cable. So that's where all of this is coming from, and the next layer is going to be, we'll give you, we'll answer more questions, and then we can see where it goes from there.
Can I, you speak to these water things at all? Some very surprising things in here.
Not with much detail, no, I can't. And the reason why is because I'm literally just taking things from that independent board.
Let's put the figure to the warrant about.
Can I just touch on the peg? In my mind, I was thinking that we had money in that account that could be utilized for these.
That's what we're suggesting.
Okay, so this doesn't go on...
It goes on a warrant, but the source will be the peg. See how it says peg right there?
Right, special reserve.
At the subtotal, it says peg capital fund.
Right, it won't affect the tax bill. It affects your cable bill because you're already paying it, but you're already paying it.
Okay.
So we're taking the money that's already been paid.
But it affects the town warrant because people, it's people's money, so...
Just to have to agree to take it out of that fund.
So they have to agree they want to do this, to spend money from that fund for those purposes.
We have to agree.
Just as they, just as they vote for the budget for...
So the, the second letter, if we covered it, that's fine, but so obviously there is percolating. So there's been percolating for years, and that's the need to have more resources than going up to do the facility payments. And I think in an initial conversation, I think, I expressed that we, that the times to start this is not to try and go to a full-time or significant part-time body with benefits and all that, but rather to at least start with a contract to find a local business, if that's the right word, that does this kind of stuff, and have adequate funds available to, to stay while the heat goes off or on the light. So I think we may have some difference ultimately with this, but I think we all agree it should be explored and discussed, right? Is that our agreement? So do we have, do we have, what do we need to do on that today?